Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande Council Meeting on this February 21st, 2023. Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Didn't get any notification on if anyone was here for the invocation tonight. Oh, you are here. I didn't get a note, so I apologize. So we're gonna have our invocation and pledge, so if you wouldn't mind, approach the podium and then remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Good evening. Please pray with me. Gracious God, I am humbled to come before you this evening. You are awesome in your power and majesty. You are worthy to be praised. I ask for your presence here today. These council members are gathered together for the important work of governing this city. I ask that you give them your strength and wisdom in all that they do as their elected officials that represent all the people of Casa Grande. Give them compassionate hearts when considering actions that would impact the most vulnerable in our community. Give them discernment on all matters. Let them be cooperative with one another, arriving at solutions to problems that help the most people while safeguarding individual rights. Bless each one in their personal lives, in their families, and the community that they represent. Give them peace in their hearts, peace in their home life, peace in their hometown. I give you all the glory as your servant. I ask all of this in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item is our roll call. Let the roll call show that all members are present. Next is our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from February 6th, 2023, and the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from January 5th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next we'll move to item D, Claims Against the City.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated February 1st through 14th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor abstained.
All right, one abstention. All right, next item is item E, Meeting Agenda Approval. Any changes, Larry?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, how many changes? Anything you want moved? All right, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented. Next we'll move to Consent Agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anybody on the council who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item H on our agenda. This is a public comment section. This is when I will open the floor, so the floor is open. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, this is your opportunity. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and also understand that it is not an agendized item, so we cannot comment on it. Is there anyone here? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Your hand was up. The young lady's hand was up first, so I'll let her go first. Please state your name and your address for us, please.
My name is Jean Henderson.
Can you speak into the microphone because we can't hear you?
My name is Jean Henderson. My address is Box 10061 in Casa Grande. I didn't tell you last time I was here, but I've been homeless for two years as of the 30th of April. I'm seventy-four and a half years old. I'm a retired BIA DOI counselor where I was for twenty years, living and working on the reservations. And there were circumstances that led me to this, and I'm gonna meet with Miss Councilmember Fitzgibbons next week. But I just wanted to let you know that organizations who have helped me as much as they can have been Fountain of Life, Community Food Bank, Officers Moore in Duran, CG Helps, Coruson Behavioral Health, Against Abuse, Safe House, and Yuma where I went to Crossroads Shelter, and then I came back here. And anyway. Number two, I think the veterans in this town need to have a place to live. I keep meeting all these veterans around town, and they really need help. And if they could have even a small place and a live-in or in, or even halftime live-in or in, because they worked really hard and they did a lot of service for the people. Okay. Oh, I know a lot of people in town. The librarians are like my family. I know them in people all over the stores. People have been telling me they think that we ought to have a curfew in town Sunday night through Thursday night. They're suggesting 11:00 PM on those nights. So that if you just think about that. Okay. I think also I've been thinking about two grocery bags that would help people because I've been using cloth grocery bags for years. And I brought some, but I forgot to bring them up here. But I wanted to know if they could be handed out at schools. You could make them print them, probably get them printed for not much. There's a really nice one that I carry around that says, "Mother Earth thanks you," and it's green. There's another one that's beige that I brought with me from California that says, "We're all in this neighborhood together." And I thought maybe you could come up with something about, "We all love this community here, and let's all help out," something like that. I would be pleased also to hand out bags at Fry's, Safeway, and Walmart, and people know me around. They know my vehicle. It's a little blue truck with a blue shell on it. And they know I'm very helpful, and I do love this town, and I love nature, and I really want things to go really well in this town. And I wanted to ask you, wasn't it a beautiful day in the neighborhood today? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
You can meet with him.
I am.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Scott Farley. I live at 513 West Manor Drive. I'm currently working on a trailer next to mine that belongs to me. And as long as I'm working on it, I can have the trailer there, but the moment I'm done, I'll have to move it, which I can't afford to do. So Planning and Zoning told me that I had to ask you guys for a variance in order to bring the lot back because it's 511. And also, my landlord mentioned that he has to pay sewer and trash tax on this property as well. And if possible, get a variance for 509 and a half because he bought the property originally to make money, which is what we all do when we're landlords, to make money. And if he can't make enough money to pay his bills, then, you know, he might as well get rid of it. So basically, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, and as I said earlier, those are not agendized items, so we can't address it. But we can give direction to staff to reach out to both you to answer some questions after the meeting if you want to stick around, okay? Great. All right, seeing no one else, then I'm gonna close the floor, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our Ward of Contracts, which is I-1. Chief, is that you? Nope, Public Works.
That's me.
Sorry, Dwayne.
No problem. Mayor, council members, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Franklin Striping out of Phoenix, Arizona, for installation of paint stripes and markings on roadways within the city of Casa Grande as part of the annual pavement maintenance program for an amount not to exceed $217,202.46. Staff is requesting authorization to complete this project utilizing an existing contract through Maricopa County. This contract would provide for pavement striping to various city streets. And there was a map in your packet that showed which streets. On average, pavement striping is replaced every three to five years with heavy traffic areas requiring shorter increments. The contract amount of $197,456.79 along with a contingency of $19,745.67 for a total amount not to exceed $217,202.46. With that, what questions do you have?
This is part of our ongoing maintenance, right, Dwayne?
Right, we do striping every year. We try to vary arterials one year and residential streets the next.
I know we have so much of that going on, Dwayne. It says the end of July should be done. When's the timeframe of starting that?
Sorry, what?
When's the timeframe for starting the project?
Boy, what's another council meeting you asked me a question I can't answer? I'm thinking in the next few months, as soon as the striping contractor has the ability to get down here. They're really busy this time of year.
Lisa?
You know, Dwayne, once, when we do this every year and then, you know, we approve it, and the public always asks, you know, what they're seeing it going on around town. This is on the website, right, the map of what is gonna be done, the locations that the striping will be done?
Well, it was, you know, in your packet, so that was available for the public to look at, but I'd have to check.
It'll be on our new website.
Yeah, just for, yeah, after it's approved.
See, I'm getting a head nod.
Yeah, so if it isn't, we'll get it on there.
Yeah.
It'll go on.
This is the kind of thing that will be on that new website. So the opportunity is that each department then has to make sure that they communicate to our PIO group and make sure that we get it on there. But that's, that would be a good use of it, I think.
Definitely. We're working hard to try to get as much information as we can on the website.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Dwayne. Seeing none, then I'll ask for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3367, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Franklin Striping, Inc. for the annual pavement preservation program, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Franklin Striping, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to Maricopa County.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3367 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item I-2, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that mayor and council authorize a purchase of two 2023 Ford T350 police transport vans from Santan Ford using illicit Arizona State contract for the amount of $108,428.77. These vehicles will be outfitted with police equipment and technology through MHQ of Arizona, utilizing our contract that's also listed for the amount of $58,625.12. The combined total before council tonight is $167,053.89, which breaks down to roughly $83,526.94 per vehicle. That number is significant because if council remembers, in November of 2021, we got authorization to buy these same two vans, except a 2022, and with the shortage of those vehicles, we had to withdraw out of that contract. They were unable to meet the contract demands, so we nullified that contract. And currently, Santan can order us two, these two vehicles in the week of March 20th. And there'll be 2023 vans, and of course, that means the price is up, which put us $17,053.89 short of our original allocated funding of $150,000. That's $17,000 and change that we made up from lines in our operational budget. And these, like I said, would be started to manufacture on the week of March 20th. Currently, we have one PTO van available that's far exceeded its life, and that's the only vehicle that we have right now to transport prisoners to and from Florence. Without it answering any questions.
Matt, Bob?
You naming all your kids?
Yes, obviously Matt.
So what happens when you come from a family of five?
Chief, are you able to reuse the prisoner, the box container that slides into the van?
They've changed the model a little bit, so we had to outfit. They're like anybody else, councilor.
They change, tweak it a little.
They're gonna change it just enough it doesn't fit. It's like your phone charger, except a lot more expensive.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, seeing no more questions, then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5514, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Santan Ford for the purchase of two 2023 Ford police transport vans, accepting a quote from MHQ of Arizona to provide uplifting services for the vans, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of the contracts or purchase order to complete the project, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5514 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item K, K-1. This is a Public Works item.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that mayor and city council pass a debt authorization resolution for the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, WIFA, for the wastewater project financing application. The city of Casa Grande requires additional wastewater collection and distribution infrastructure. This is to support the new commercial, industrial, and residential developments planned for the city's rapid growth in the next few years. Therefore, it is prudent to move forward with all the necessary improvements to the city's waste reclamation facility to increase capacity. This includes effluent reuse, recharge, collection. This includes effluent reuse, recharge, collection, distribution, infrastructure, recharge basins, and injection well construction, and plant upgrades. Facilities include gravity sewer lines, sanitary sewer force mains, reclaimed water lines, and potential service connections. WIFA reviewed and selected the city's application for effluent recharge basins and injection well construction to increase the plant's capacity to over 12 million gallons a day. The amount requested was $34,835,000. This application ranked number seven out of 49 on WIFA's project priority list. The high ranking indicates a good probability to receive project financing approval. Once WIFA receives the city's debt authorization resolution, they will develop a project finance application, which will include financial, legal, managerial, and technical language for the city's review and approval. The PFA is due eight weeks before WIFA's bi-monthly board meeting. The debt authorization resolution does not bind the city to the project application. Mayor, council, city manager, and staff will be able to review and discuss the PFA at a later meeting. The city will have the opportunity to accept or reject the PFA. The debt authorization resolution only provides for the development of the PFA by WIFA. As this project is in WIFA's 2023 funding cycle, time is of the essence for the city's approval of the debt authorization resolution to allow for WIFA's development of a project finance application for city review. With that, what are your questions?
Lisa?
Just a quick question. I know we talked about this earlier for the solar project, but how detailed is this application for us to, you know, as far as time consuming? Is it a lot of time? Is it something that we're, we do regularly, so we're pretty familiar with the process? I don't know, Dwayne or Larry, if you can just get just an idea.
So as part of our contract to design and manage these projects, we had money in there to do this application. They've actually filled out the application, and it's ready to go whenever we want to pull the trigger, if you approve the authorization tonight.
Good. I guess, pretty quick.
They're ready to go. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, then I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5515. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, of Pinal County, Arizona, to authorize the application for a clean water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5515 as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is K-2. Are you going to do this, Larry, or is Dwayne going to do this, or hope?
Right here, Mayor.
He's down there.
Mackenzie?
First off, I'd like to say I didn't get the internal memo that we were modeling for GQ. First, we had David Refner, and now we have Dwayne over here. Severely underdressed.
Mackenzie, I have the same vest. You're looking good.
Thanks for the costume. It's great. But the second thing is too, Ed and Dick and Larry did such a great job with the presentations they did earlier, so this is going to be a pretty quick resolution today. So the staff recommends that mayor and city council approve the resolution providing debt authorization for Water Infrastructure Financing Authority, WIFA, project finance application, PFA, in an amount not to exceed 20 million for the wastewater treatment plant solar project. And so just two points I wanted to bring up was first, as Dick and Ed explained, we originally requested 20 million, because we were looking at that kind of in between 2 megawatts and 5 megawatts. After they did their due diligence and their investigations, they found that it was in our best interest to remain at that lower 2.25 megawatt system. And then the final thing is, I just wanted to state that the debt authorization, similar to what Dwayne explained, it doesn't kind of lock us in or bind the city to anything at this point. It's just so we can move along with the application process through WIFA. And similar with Dwayne, as soon as we get the debt authorization, we have the project finance application completed. We're actually going to submit it in tomorrow, so we'll be able to get to their board meeting, I think that's in April, if I recall correctly, and then that's when we'll bring back the actual contract authorization to council for you guys to review and look and make sure the interest rates and everything look good to your liking. And so the fiscal impact for this item at this point is nothing, and obviously, staff will return to mayor and council in April for approval or denial of the proposed contract if we are approved through WIFA. The alternatives are, don't approve this resolution. And then Brett, I don't know if, is there any opportunity where we could reduce that amount to 10 million instead of the 20 million?
You could, they could. Sorry, my voice is not here today. Anyone who moves it could move the resolution, but ask to amend, amend it by replacing the number 20 million with 10 million.
Do we want to do that today, or do you want to wait?
I'll leave that to Larry.
Members of the council, I think it's probably prudent for us to keep the resolution as authorized today and let the numbers be finalized. And ultimately, if there's a loan that, loan documents, then we can approve the loan documents for the final amount.
Okay. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, then?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mackenzie.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5516. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, of Pinal County, Arizona, to authorize the application for a clean water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona for the city's wastewater treatment plant solar project.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5516 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item, is our public meetings and public hearings. This is item L-1. It's a public hearing considering approval of ordinance number 1178.221.2. Mr. Tysoe? Nope. Jaclyn? Turn in the 18.
Good evening, mayor and council. Next item on the agenda is a zone change request from PAD, a religious and education site, to PAD for RV storage. It's a 10-acre site located along Quartzon, just west of Colorado Street. The current zoning, as mentioned, is for education and religious. It's part of the Muirlands PAD, originally approved in the mid-2000s. And this was for single-family development and commercial. In 2015, the site was rezoned, as noted. The single-family development portion of the current PAD does not have certificates of assured water. And so because of this, staff felt it was best to create its own PAD. However, we did carry forward some of the existing conditions of record, as you'll see on a later slide, from the existing PAD. Here's the PAD review criteria that's covered in the staff report. I'll be going over the two highlighted items. Regarding performance with the city's general plan, the site is within the neighborhood's land use category, and commercial PEDs are in allowed use. And one of the goals of that land use category is to preserve the unique qualities of neighborhoods within the, within the city, and to encourage the design of commercial buildings that reflect differences between neighborhoods by sensitive to being, excuse me, by being sensitive to scale and massing. And the site will have landscaping surrounded the site with decorative fencing that will help with the relationship between the surrounding properties. With regards to the city's zoning ordinance, PAD is an allowable zoning district, and some of the following setbacks are for the front 15, side 5, rear 5, and then there will be a 20-foot building height. The site will also incorporate landscaping. There'll be a 15-foot buffer in front and a 5-foot landscape buffer along the sides and rear. With regards to notification, Seth and the applicant met all requirements. And regarding inquiries and comments, prior to planning and commission, we did receive one phone call regarding this proposal. Had concerns with safety, aesthetics, and property values. And during the planning commission, we did, meeting, we did receive one comment. They had concerns with the height of the buildings and traffic. I did follow up with them after the meeting and sent them the major site plan that's currently under review to show them the scale of the buildings and everything. And I did not receive any comments after that. So with that, the planning commission, on a 7-0 vote, recommended to city council to approve the zone change requests with the following conditions of record. And I did want to note that we did add number four since planning commission, and I did follow up with the applicant, and they were fine with that. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Jaclyn. All right, seeing no questions, then I will, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on this matter, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, maybe I didn't understand what was happening here, but you said there was one call. I'm concerned, just because there's one call, that means everybody's agreeing with this? I don't think it sounds right. I think it should be opened up to everybody to get more feedback about what they want before just passing something through. Because last time I was here, I kept the gentrification, pushing people outside, you know. I know they want these RV places. When I was in Yuma, at a shelter about two, three weeks ago, and I was driving back through, there was all these RV parks just smashed in altogether, sort of like an eyesore. And I know people had been living out there, I'm sure they were. So I think this should be opened up to everybody, you know, especially in those areas. So, okay.
Do you want to address any of that?
So this is just for RV storage, not a park or anything. And with regards to neighborhood reach out, we do, for planning commission, send out notices to neighbors within 300 feet. And it's also posted, signed postage on the site, as well as notices to the paper. And those were just the comments that we received.
Yeah, I think that the planning zoning commission has notifications. Then there's notifications for tonight's meeting. This is an RV storage facility. It's not a public, it's not open for a public RV camping or park. It is just storage, and it is adjacent to the elementary school district, Cactus Middle, and what's the elementary school that's there?
Choya.
Choya.
Choya. So it's that campus, it's right next to that campus. So it's a kind of a zone between residential and the school, so. Anybody else have any other? This is a public hearing, so you are welcome to speak on this matter. Go ahead, Lisa.
And, and thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, I know we send out the notifications to the neighbors, but, you know, I do think some of these projects do affect the larger population. So I think maybe with the CG Alerts, this new program that we're going to be implementing, could be helpful for other citizens that might not read the paper or might not read the planning commission or the city council packets. But if we can try to encourage our citizens to go online and sign up for these public meetings, I'm hoping that this is something, an example of something that it can be pushed out to the general public. Is that right, Jaclyn? I mean, this can be pushed out with information, right?
And then it is noticed in the paper as well, so if they did have comments, they could reach out to our department.
And if somebody signed up for our online, they sign up, they get notification, and it comes to them via our, our meeting notification. So all that information's in there.
Is in there.
So, it, it's communicated out there.
Yeah.
Quite a lot, you have to look for it, you have to read it.
Well, see, that's just it, I know.
But you have to read it, you know, you can't push people to read it, so.
And there is a sign posted on the site that does generate comments, so I will get calls from them.
That's true, too. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, then I will close the public comments. Any other comment from council? All right, seeing none, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.221.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from the Muirlands Planned Area Development to Planned Area Development for recreational vehicle storage on property located generally near the northwest corner of Quartzon Road in Colorado Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1178.221.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, that concludes tonight's business. The next item on the, and last item on the agenda is our reports, so I'm going to mix this up just a little bit, and Jeff, I'll start with you.
Don't have a whole lot to report. I did go to the meeting with the architects for Florence Streetscape Project. It was very informative, and I think they've listened to the concerns that were brought forward, and we're working on what I think will be a doable plan for the city moving forward. So, Mr. Ains and your staff, thank you for setting that up. It was very informational.
Matt?
Thanks. Had a good couple of weeks. The youth commission had a meeting here a couple Saturdays ago, and we hosted the Maricopa Youth Council in a, like a joint session. We had some fun and games, and we had shared some ideas. And they had like roundtable discussions about the different activities they do and different goals they had. And it was really neat. And one interesting thing that I took is how we always hear about what Maricopa has, and they wanted a lot of stuff that we have, too. So it went both ways. So it was really neat to see that. And they did chop some money at our local food establishments they don't have in Maricopa, so that was even better. It was a lot of fun. And then immediately following that, we went out to the Garden of Sunshine, had a little memorial service there with some of the families. Went really nice, and the community services department helped us a lot setting up for everything. Did a great job, and so we appreciate that. And they, just to remind again that the shredding and e-cycle event is April 22nd. Thanks to Public Works, who's going to be helping with the e-cycle as well. And that's at First American Credit Union on Pinal Avenue. And that'll be Earth Day, April 22nd. And I got to go to part of the skate park mural presentation and see some skate tricks there, which was pretty cool. It was, it was a nice day. And then, I tried to stay out of this, but the, or not the school board of Casa Grande Unit High School District, but yet, when we talk to all these businesses and places that come to town, one of the first things they talk about is how's our schools. And, you know, some stuff's been going on, but it appears that they will, chosen Jeff Lavender to be the new superintendent. And I've known Jeff, my wife worked for him for a long time. And a lot of people have worked for him, and they love working for him, and not because it's easy, because he makes it done. And so, you know, I don't think they could have chosen a better person for this job. He knows the kids here, he knows our community, he knows the parents. He's a great leader. And the school is a heart, you know, one of the hearts of our community, and it's very important for us, for our businesses, just to make it. And he, you know, he's, he's been a Rodell Award winner. He knows how to run an A-plus school and get the grades, and he is the best choice, I can say, for the job. So Jeff, congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for leading our school. It's really important to the entire community. And again, I just can't think of a better candidate, because he knows our community, and I think that's something that's been lacking in the past, is someone that understands already. So, Jeff, thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
Ditto what Matt says, Jeff. I also attended the skate park community meeting. What?
He didn't call on you yet.
The skate park community meeting was really good. I was impressed on just with the talent, but also with the artists that were there. So Gloria, thank you very much for setting that up. Kudos to the Garden of Sunshine. They always do a wonderful job. I, Anthony and I did get to go to the Leadership Academy last week since we missed the first. And it was really interesting to see so many different people from some backgrounds. And in fact, the mayor and I were part of interviewing two of them that are in the Leadership Academy for our board and commission tonight. So that was great. Just a reminder that we have the cactus flying coming up on the 4th as, as well as the studio tour. So there's a lot going on in the next few weeks in Casa Grande. And that's it.
All right, Lisa.
Sorry, Anthony, he made eye contact with me. Yes, it is. It's definitely a busy time. Things are gearing up with the new year. Councilmember McBride and I went to the Super Bowl party at the HOHP, the Veterans Center. So that was exciting. We got to meet the Hall of Famer. Okay, Joe Delamelour, is that right for you football fans? He was a Buffalo Bills player. And he was such a nice man. So, so nice. And, and ended up staying at the Veterans Center for a while and talking to all the veterans. So that was good. And there was also Joe Jackson that played for the Vikings. So it was exciting because the HOHP was chosen to get one of the Hall of Famers to come down and meet with them. So they had a nice little Super Bowl kickoff party there. The Florence Streetscape, I was happy to attend that meeting. So Larry, I'm glad you brought us all in. It was great to get the, the feedback that was given from our public meeting. The, the group is obviously looking at all those comments and concerns and questions and, of course, putting together another, you know, proposal to the, to the city on, on moving forward. But it is kind of a, it is a really neat program, so what they're thinking about. As you guys know, I've been bringing this up for years. And Jody, I'm, I'm glad you interviewed several of the Faith Alliance members, but the I Help Program, which is the interfaith homeless emergency lodging program, is moving forward. I know she interviewed several of the, some of the Faith Alliance members. This is the group that's kind of spearheading one of the strategicals from the mayor's task force on homelessness. So we are excited that we're making progress. Ultimately, we want it every day of the week, but we're starting it with one day a week. And it's a rotating homeless shelter that'll be going to the churches, local churches. So starting with one day a week and, and hopefully we'll get this going as the city of Tempe and Mesa and Chandler every day of the week for the homeless. So we have four churches that are, we're working through all the details. We're working with the city, public safety. You know, our, you know, getting the shower units to the churches. So May 1st is the day they're, they're trying to target because Easter is April. So that's where we were going to target initially, but since that, that's a busy time for them. So looking forward to that. I attended, as, as well as councilmember Hattleston, the neighborhood meeting for the Pinal and Hopi property. For those of you that don't remember, this is where the city sold 120 acres of city property to a developer that's going to bring about 500 manufactured homes to Pinal, the, the corner right around Pinal and Hopi. So they brought, they had a neighborhood meeting and I thought it was well attended. There was about 25 to 30 people there. And, and Jaclyn, I brought this up earlier because there, there were people that contacted me that didn't get notification and they had questions on it. So they were obviously beyond that 500 feet border. And so that's why I just want to make sure that we're, this is obviously, obviously a project that just doesn't affect those, you know, surrounding property owners. There's people that were just a little concerned and had questions, questions also on this particular property. So we were able, and I know the city sent out, you know, social media posts on Monday and Tuesday, so a couple people came. But there were people that you know, would have liked to attend and had noticed, you know, to attend this. The feedback was interesting. And I think the council members, when they voted on this, they said that they wanted to get the feedback from the community. So I really hope the staff gives you the true commit, comments at that meeting. I know they will. But there were obviously concerns, you know, certain concerns with the property. There was people that, you know, there that, you know, you know, affordable housing was important. But there was also, you know, traffic, the long-term home values. Is it truly affordable? And how this, other projects this developer had sold and how the reviews are. So I really hope you look at those as we move forward. So Faith Alliance is having a blood drive. So for anyone that likes to participate, there's a huge demand right now for blood. And so it's at, sat, this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at the LDS Church on Colorado Street. So you can just show up at any time and, and give blood and, and they'll appreciate that. So that's it for me.
Anthony?
I'm fine. I'll give my time over to Lisa. Thank you. Thank you so much. And Matt, there were a lot of things I want to say in regards to lavender. We're definitely praying for you. And we know you're going to do a great job. And so, so thank you for that. And I, I give back my time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you.
Mayor, I enjoyed attending the legislative day sponsored by CAG and Sun Corridor and hosted by League of Cities. It was very informative. I have to admit though, I was a little disappointed in our representatives that they did not express a more passionate objection to the food tax bill. If that passes, it's going to greatly affect us in a negative way. And I, I waited to hear them say they were opposed to it, and I don't think I ever heard that. But we'll see. Also attended the neighborhood meeting that council member Fitzgibbons, Gibbons mentioned. And it was well attended and very informative. I appreciated the opportunity. Also this week, the Fire Department Awards Dinner is on the 25th. I'll be, I'll be attending that as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple of things. If anybody's interested in, in Arizona Project Wet, there is a training program on March 21st, 9:30 to 11:30. It's at the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Pinal County Office on Cottonwood here in Casa Grande. So it's from 9:30 to 11:30. Then, once you are trained, then there's an event, a festival, the actual water festival, which is on March 28th from 7:30 to 2:30 at Mesquite Elementary School, where you'll actually use your training to teach young people and teach kids about water. And so as important as water is to us all in the desert, if someone is really passionate about this, maybe we can put this on our website. If anybody's listening to me.
She's, yes. She's writing it down.
Okay. So, because you do have to register for, for this, so please look for it on our website tomorrow. I'll give you till noon. You can get it on the website by noon. Then the Public Safety Day, which is coming up, that's April 1st, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And that's going to be a good event. It's usually at our park, is it not?
Paul Mason?
Paul Mason.
Paul Mason, yeah.
It doesn't say.
It just says, it doesn't say. It's usually at Paul Mason though. Yeah, I'm getting a head shake, Paul Mason. Might want to redo this flyer too, because it doesn't say Paul Mason. Not being critical. Oh, it's PD's fault. Oh, thanks, Steve. Also, just an update on single-family building permits. I will tell you, January this year was abysmal compared to last year for the city of Casa Grande. Last year in January, we had 113 permits. This year we had three. So, and January over January, for, for all of the Phoenix metropolitan area, 867 permits in 2023 compared to 2,784 the year before. So that's a 69% decrease. So you can see what interest rates does to housing. And yet we need more housing for people. So I'm befuddled on the fact that we need housing, we have a housing shortage, and yet nobody's building any houses. So. And it's not because of city legislation. Just want to reiterate that. Some of our legislators seem to think that's the case. On a more positive note, the elementary school is, is working on a, it's called COIL. It's their Center for Online Innovative Learning. And it's a, it's a, it's a center again for online innovative learning that's actually going to be located online, but it can actually go to the campus, is it not, at the?
Which campus?
Evergreen.
Evergreen. So it's at the Evergreen.
It's actually an in-person program. They're the online, will be separate.
Okay.
Two programs they're going to have. The online and then the other program, which is very similar to the base program.
Yeah, so it'll be interactive type of programming for middle school.
Problem solving.
Yeah, problem solving type programs. So again, I think moving in the right direction in terms of some of our, our working with our young people, getting them interested in, in a subject, especially before they get to high school. So they're, not everybody's an athlete, not everybody's in the band. So, you know, we need to try and engage all of our young people and get them interested in some topic. And get them to focus on that topic so that when they get to high school, they can actually concentrate on something. And so anyway, I think it's a great, great program. I applaud, I applaud the elementary school district and high school district both for, for their efforts in this area. I have a whole bunch to say about the legislature, but I'm not going to say it. So please educate yourself on what the legislature's doing. I have 25 pages, almost 30 pages of bad bills. Bad bills, meaning they hurt cities and towns. And just a top line, it's about $10 million for the city of Casa Grande for just two of these bills. And they want, they want to take away our funding. And then they want to tell us that you can't defund fire and police, which are 50% of our budget. So they take away 17% of the budget and say, don't, don't touch fire and police when they're 50% of our budget. Now, I don't think we have any intentions of taking any money away from our fire and police. But if they cut 17% of our budget, we're all going to feel the pinch. Unless we levy more sales tax on you, our citizens. And that's a very strong possibility if the legislature takes away 17% of our operating budget. That's 17% of our operating budget. It's pretty drastic. And we can't take it, take it out of our salaries because we don't make anything anyway. So that being said, talk to your legislators, tell them not to take city mon, city dollars out of our pockets. Literally, the one, the one bill, they wanted, number one, take away charter cities, which we are a charter city, which we manage our own governance. We don't, we don't have to follow the state's mandates. Except when they do this, when they take funding away. And then if we do take money away from the fire and police, they will actually reduce our shared revenues by that same amount. So it's a double whammy. It's not like we lose 17% plus then we're going to lose if we, if we happen to cut fire and police. And I'm just telling you, it's, this, this legislature this year is so bad. There must be five, eight bills just on election, on elections. How they want to do away with early ballots. They want identification revisions. There's hand counting, requiring hand counting of, for elections. I mean, we're going backwards. I don't know. If anyone would like to see my list, I'd be happy to share it with you.
On the website.
We can do that.
He doesn't, he doesn't want to talk about it, but he's passionate, as are we all.
So here, so I, Scott gave me, he's a quote, and this is a quote from a gentleman by the name of Jack Dobolsky. He is the executive director for the League of Arizona Cities and Towns from 1957 until he retired in 1997. And he, he had a great quote. And this quote, imagine yourself being a legislator, okay? Not, not a city person. But his quote was, "That level of government that I am on is good, honest, true. That level of government above me is going, is doing it to me. And that level of government below me needs watching and control." You gotta be there to, to understand this. But basically, it's the legislature, legislature complains about federal government telling them what to do. And then they turn around and they tell us what to do. So it's it's crazy. Okay. I'll get off my soapbox. Anyway, everybody have a great week and thank you all for being here. Meeting is adjourned.